We'll call the special council meeting to order today's Friday, August 8, 10:30 or 10:34 a.m. Madam Clerk, we call the roll.
Mr. Hammond?
Here.
Ms. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Chris Smith?
Here.
Mr. Cliff Smith? I'm sorry, it's been, it's been a day.
I'm here, even though you don't remember me.
Mr. Vince Maggio?
I'm here.
Mr. Creighton Cochran?
Here.
All present. Sorry, I'm sorry. Mr. Joel Gerard, absent.
All right, counsel, I need a, I need a motion to approve today's agenda.
A second.
We got a motion by Councilman Cochran, a second by Councilman Maggio. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council?
Yes, President. I'm Vince Maggio, Councilman District 5. I just want to set the record straight. I didn't know nothing about this, and I didn't take no monies from District 5's budget to pay for the parking lots. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maggio. Is there any other comments from the council? All right, council, today we're vote, we're voting by voice, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, there's none opposed. All right, committee reports. City Council Executive Committee recognition of appointed members and committee chair by the council president. I've attached for the record, but we never stated it publicly for the record in a city council meeting, so I wanted to do that today. The, as president, after this resolution passed on July 1, I immediately appointed Councilman Brian Hammond, District 1, Councilwoman Deborah Ross, District 2, and Councilman Cliff Smith, District 3, and appointed Councilman Brian Hammond as the committee chair. So that was your committee for this investigative committee. We'll now move into the City Council Investigative Committee update and recommendations from the committee chair, but before that happens, I would like to state for the record that what just transpired in the committee meeting before this was inappropriate and does not reflect the views of the entire council. I have always maintained that this council will operate under the utmost respect and decorum for each other, for the citizens of Bossier and for everybody that we represent. So as council president, I own everything that happens at this dais, and I sincerely apologize to the citizens of Bossier City, because that is not how we're going to do business. So, Councilman Hammond, please give your committee update and recommendations.
I'll just, I think we will refer this, defer this to the full council.
Okay. Counsel, Councilman Hammond has supplied each of us with a copy of his report. However, the clerk has notified me that the Tuesday meeting, that would be, that would be August 12, the city attorney's office and the mayor have requested for an executive session to be placed on that meeting to specifically discuss this. So I'm going to defer that this council not make any of, any recommendations today. Give each of you an opportunity to read Councilman Hammond's report. We'll go through that executive session, and we will come out and make an informed decision after that. So is there anybody opposed to that recommendation?
I have a question, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
When did this executive session take place? When did this come about?
I think it was, I think it was submitted by the deadline yesterday, but it wasn't?
I got it this morning, but I had told them that there was no way that I could get the agenda out by the normal deadline. And so if they wanted to submit things, they could, until I, I wanted to wait till after this meeting. And, and with everything that's been going on this week, I knew that there was no way that I could get it out yesterday.
Okay.
So they submitted it this morning.
So they submitted it within the timeframe that the clerk allowed them.
So I have been working on this for almost 60 days, and now that I've got a report ready, now it's convenient that they want to go into executive session and talk about it.
Mr. President?
I, I have the floor, Mr. President.
I'll get to you in a second, Mr. Ray. I understand your frustration, but we also-
It is very, it is very frustrating. It is, it is very frustrating to me. It is frustrating to the citizens of Bossier. That is why people do not trust us. They don't trust local government. They don't trust federal. They don't trust state because of stuff just like this. I was elected by District 1 to be a steward of the citizens' money, and not only District 1, but of all of the city of Bossier and do what is right. And that is what I, that's what I've been trying to do for the past 60 days, is what is right. So people have a better understanding of this council, so there is more transparency. But now, all of a sudden, since I have a report that, oh, let's go to executive session now. That is what is frustrating to me. That is what is frustrating to every citizen.
Mr. Ray?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have stated since March 25th that these are issues that are related to open litigation and open claims, and they are, if we do not discuss them in executive session, then we put the city in a bad position from a litigation standpoint and a bargaining standpoint. I have said that consistently. I said it in every document of all of the copious amounts of documents that I submitted. Every one I've requested that it be in executive session. We learned about, the world learned about this special meeting and this council meeting at 10:00 a.m. yesterday, the exact 24-hour deadline for the notice, which is frustrating. I submitted that request for executive session this morning, because as Ms. McGraw said, because of everything that's going on, she had given a little bit more grace on the time, and I feel it's appropriate, because we did it back in April the 8th. We had an executive session, and we spoke to the then-council and explained everything. We had met with Mr. Smith and Mr. Hammond on March 31st and explained everything. And I believe it's appropriate to explain it to the new council members. And I didn't have any idea about your report, Councilman Hammond. I learned about it today. I haven't seen it. I hope to get to see it.
You can address the president.
Well, and let me say, Mr. President, and Mr. Hammond, and members of the council-
You can address the president.
Mr. Hammond.
I'm trying to apologize to you, Mr. Hammond.
I'm worried over that.
If I can address you and apologize, I would like to, because I agree with Mr. Smith. This is not how we should conduct business, and it's not how I would normally conduct business, but I also feel that in a public meeting, as a citizen, I should be able to speak.
You've already threatened me with being sued-
Mr. Hammond, Mr. Ray has the floor.
In charges, so you can address the president.
Mr. Hammond, Mr. Ray has the floor.
I haven't threatened him with anything. I don't know what he's talking about, so. But I apologize. We're trying to communicate better. I think that we've, you know, things move so quickly sometimes in government. It's hard to communicate about everything. And I think that everyone up here knows that I have tried my best to communicate. I'm trying really hard. I'm here doing my job. I love my job, but we can communicate better, and I, I look forward to getting this issue behind all of us.
Thank you.
I have one more question, Mr. President.
Yes, sir, Mr. Hammond.
Has the city been served with a lawsuit on this issue?
Yes.
I would have to defer to the city attorney's office.
We've been served?
Yes.
Where is that at? We've not seen, we've not seen a lawsuit.
We get lawsuits all the time. I don't send them to you.
Respectfully, discussion of lawsuits is not going to happen in a public meeting.
Well, at least, Mr. President, the lawsuit we were served with some time ago has to do with the access issues around there. It's the more properties that you're aware of.
But the ones that I am specifically talking about have not served us with a lawsuit.
Well, the executive session request includes the lawsuit that we've been served with. If you're talking about these properties, the ones on the west side, some of the west side properties have not. They're open, they're threats of litigation, and they're identified.
Threats.
Well, that's a proper measure of, or way to go into executive session.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. You have anything else?
No, thank you, Mr. President.
Does any other council member have any comments? Or is there any objection to deferring this to Tuesday following the executive session?
I'm making a motion, we defer.
All right, there's a motion by Councilman Cliff Smith, a second by Councilwoman Deborah Ross. Is there any public comment? Good morning, Mr. Marriott. Please state your name and address for the record.
Wes Marriott, editor of SOLO Live, 211 Shadow Ridge Drive. Good morning. Mr. President, I'm here today not just as a citizen, but as someone who has followed the government's conduct with, specifically this government's conduct, with increasing concern. Mr. President, there's no need for your earlier apology. The people of the city are frustrated, just like Mr. Hammond's, and they're rightly upset by the circumstances. It appears the city, now and historically, has a disdain for the law. I want to speak directly about the investigative committee hearing that you just discussed and the troubling admissions we heard from Mr. Ray. First, Mr. Ray admitted that he does not retain emails for longer than 30 days. Let that sink in. A public official, an employee of this government, an attorney charged with protecting the legal integrity of Bossier City, voluntarily deletes or fails to retain public records. This is a violation of Louisiana Public Records Law. Title 44 of the Louisiana revised statute is clear. All public records, including emails, must be preserved for the legally mandated retention period, usually scheduled at three years, and in many cases, permanent. The city attorney's office is not exempt from this requirement. They're the ones supposed to be advising compliance. Instead, it sounds like they're casually erasing the paper trail. This is why people are frustrated, because we try to uncover the truth, and we're hampered by unnecessary and unlawful delays, and it's unacceptable. Secondly, Mr. Ray claimed this council does not have the authority to subpoena records or compel production of documents during an investigation. That's false. We all heard it right here from this podium. Section 3.15 of the Bossier City Charter gives this council the authority to compel the attendance of witnesses who are city employees and compel the production of records during investigations. Mr. Hammond's comments were very clear and very pointed, that he requested records that he did not receive. That is a power this council has, and it's a power an investigative committee have. Mr. Ray confounded the issue by saying he didn't have to produce a sworn statement. That's not the question that was asked, and this is a tactic that is frequently used by the city's legal office, is to answer a question and argue a point that was not made. The question asked was, where are the records I requested? The answer was, I'm not required to produce a sworn statement under perjury. Two plus two does not equal five. We want to hear four. Unfortunately, integrity has been in short supply in the city attorney's office. This isn't a one-off. This is a pattern. You don't need a law degree to understand the basic implications of integrity. The Second Circuit Court of Appeal admonished the previous council based on advice by this city's lawyers before. The district attorney refused to pursue charges against the last council because he believed they were misled by legal advice. And now here we are again. The city is defending another questionable legal position with the assistant city attorney stating that he may be destroying public records and lying about your powers under the charter on the record in a formal hearing. It's embarrassing for the people of the city. It's dangerous, and this office is a liability. You cannot get to the truth when the people responsible for hiding it are still in power. So I'll close with this. I'm going to ask this council to ask the mayor to place Charles Jacobs and Richard Ray on administrative leave until a full investigation into their conduct is complete. The same thing would happen to any police officer accused of impropriety. You're not saying they did anything wrong yet, but you cannot trust their advice while they are still working for the city and in such an important role when there's questions out there that haven't been answered. Administrative leave is not a complicit to say wrongdoing has occurred. It's just saying until we figure this out, I'm going to get advice from someone else. The citizens deserve accountability. The council deserves honest legal advice, and the truth can't come to light while the people in charge of bearing it are still calling the shots. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir, Mr.-
May I respond to several of the inaccuracies? And so, number one, Mr. Marriott cited the completely wrong section in the charter. It's section 3.09, that as I stated earlier, gives the council the power with regard to investigation to subpoena witnesses, meaning testimonial subpoenas, administer oaths to those witnesses, take testimony from those witnesses, and require the production of evidence. That's the power that's conferred in the proper section of the charter, even though we've submitted a lot of documents. What I said earlier was, I corrected the issue that was, it was insinuated that we didn't produce anything. It was as if we didn't produce anything at all, because we didn't attach to it a statement made under penalty of perjury, which you do not have the power. And Mr. Marriott is very, he's very intelligent, and he's very good at wordsmithing and twisting things, because that's what he does. But he is not correct. He's also very incorrect when he says the Second Circuit admonished this, this former body based on advice from the city attorney's office. As the returning council members will recall, we didn't have anything to do with that litigation. There were outside lawyers for both sides. We had nothing to do with it. Zero. No advice, no nothing during that case, and I was happy to have nothing to do with it. But for him to say that the Second Circuit admonished the council based on advice from our office is, it's a ball-faced lie. This is, you know, we give honest legal advice, but we can't answer questions we're not asked, so.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Is there any other public comment?
Morning, Cheetham. My 1023 Rosalie Drive. I'm shaking, dear. We, the people, went and got rid of all these that's crooked and not doing what's best for us and this city. And if you take this man's advice and that other man that sits in that chair, we, that needs to go as well as those others did. We was all so happy that the changes were made, because we believe in y'all. Don't fight each other, especially you two. When y'all came in here, we said, it's going to work, and then you've got this help. This is what this city needs, not these lawyers that twist it every way they can to make it look y'all's fault. Do what's right, not what is said. Do what's right. That's what, that's what you said you was going to do, and that's what the city, that's what we want. You know what was up there? We voted for y'all to get rid of what was up there. Please, do what you were voted for.
Thank you, Mr. Cheetham. Is there any other public comment?
John Settle. I'll give my Bossier address. How about that? 1915 Citizens Bank Drive. I really thought this was where we signed up to get free parking lots, because my building is right behind those other two, but I'm at the wrong place. I do have some standing to talk, because I pay more ad valorem taxes at the Bossier City and Bossier Parish than I do where I live, in Shreveport. And I've had a building here for 22 years. I just want to commend y'all for taking, tackling a tough issue. You know, there's not much of a honeymoon period that y'all have had. I've followed the Bossier Council for quite some time, and so you've got a tough issue, and I commend everyone for jumping right on it. That's what you should do. Like it or not, your four years are going to be determined by something like this, and that's just the reality of it. You know, you can do a lot of good works, but you're going to set the pace with how y'all handle this now. That's just how you're going to be remembered. That's just the way it works in the public world. You don't get a lot of press for the good things you do. I try to give press to you and to governments when they do good things. But, but good news doesn't make the five o'clock news. And you're going to be remembered on how you handle this, so I commend your courage, and I commend the spirit and the concerns you have. And I want you to push on, because I don't think an executive session's going to solve this. I mean, I know why there's that, but every time there's an executive session in government, and then they come back and people, and the votes suddenly change, or they look like it's a cover-up, it just gets worse. So I'm hoping that after the executive session, that this is turned over to third parties. The state police, Louisiana auditors, the Attorney General, and the DA. Because the executive session is, it's just that. It's closed the public. And I don't see a magic wand coming down to resolve it. So have your executive session, but I hope that at the end of the day, that y'all turn it over to third parties. And, and I think that's how government should work in this situation, because if you don't, you're going to forever be said, well, you know, they went in executive session in the secret room, they solved it. So let's keep things going that way. I appreciate everyone's jumping on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Settle. All right, is there any comment from the council?
Yeah. I'm not a natural-born Bossierite. I moved here in 1984, was not excited about moving to Bossier, but I've been here since 1984. My family's had a business on Buxton Boulevard since 1962. This is not pretty. It doesn't give Bossier a good look to the outside world, and it has torn me apart. It is hard to make the right decisions. It is, it's, we are faced with things that is not pleasant, but somebody's got to deal with it. And unfortunately, it follows on us to do what we feel is the best thing for Bossier City, because everyone at this dais has the best interest of Bossier City in their heart. My goal, when I started this process in January, when I told the hundreds of doors I knocked on, was that I was going to be a representative of the citizens of Bossier City, and that we were going to do our best to bring the turmoil that we had in the past and bury it. I told one person that they were going to need to find a new group to focus on, because we were going to be boring. I hope that once we put this to bed, that we become boring. I ask you as citizens, whether you're here or watching on YouTube or wherever you're at, that if you're a praying-type person, that you would hold us. Because it hurts me to see Bossier City look bad.
Thank you, Councilman Smith. Is there any other comment from the council?
Yeah, I do, Mr. President. I mean, I apologize- I mean, I apologize for my actions earlier since the words I'm hearing out of everybody's mouth, I guess I'm the one that made Bossier City look bad. I apologize for that one way, and another way I don't. Because I feel strongly about this. That's what I was elected to do. Politics isn't easy, guys. We've been sitting up here for four, well, going on almost five years of doing it. Politics isn't easy. It's not always going to be fun and pretty. Politics is politics. And we have a whole lot of people that we have to answer to every single day. So if y'all all thought it was going to be all just warm and fuzzy up here every day, it's not. I'm sorry. It's, that's not what it's going to be. I feel, I'm a very strong-headed person. I feel the way that I feel. I was put in charge of this to do a job, and I feel like I've done my job. And sometimes when you have a job to do, the outcome is not what you want it to be. And it may not be. This may get turned over to somebody and they may say, hey, Councilman Hammonds, you were completely wrong. And hey, you know what? I go on and I keep doing my job again. And that may be the case. I don't know. I'm not a lawyer. I'm a contractor. So all I did was gather the information, put it in a report, and I will send it to the proper authorities for them to determine whether or not it needs to go to another level. So, but I do apologize for my actions. I lost my temper. And I don't usually do that, but I did on a Friday morning. So I apologize to my fellow council members. If I made any of y'all look bad or anything, I apologize. That's on me. I've got big shoulders, I can carry it. Just like I always have before. But I will never be the one that sits up here and I do not say what is on my mind. So if that bothers anyone, all I can tell you is get over it. Because it's, I'm not going to say it's not going to happen again because it will. I will never be one that keeps my mouth shut. So at this point, I'd like to call the question, get this over with.
Call the question, you have to vote to call for the question.
Ma'am?
If you call for the question, you have to vote to call for the question.
Oh, we haven't voted on, I thought, I'm sorry, I'm so far ahead of myself.
I have a motion by Mr. Cliff Smith and a second by Mrs. Deborah Ross to defer any committee chair recommendations until after the executive session on August the twelfth. That's how I understand it. Is that correct?
That is correct.
I do have one more question. Does this have to be a unanimous vote?
No, sir, it doesn't.
Okay.
All right, so as I understand it, Mr. Hammonds has made a motion to call the question. So we have to take a vote.
I can rescind that if you'd like.
I would like you to do that.
I'll rescind that.
Thank you. Okay. We do have one more person that looks that wants to speak from the public. But before they speak, I do have something I'd like to say. Mr. Hammonds, nobody is, nobody's singling you out. I just want, it is important to me as the council president that we are a respected body. And so certainly nobody, you know, you have your personality and that's exactly why we all love you. And so I certainly, I certainly am not admonishing you. I just want to make sure that we all remain cordial on this issue at hand. I echo the comments of Councilman Cliff Smith. There's a difference between making a correct decision and making a quick decision. And giving everything that has been discussed today, I think it is imperative that we make the correct decision. And sometimes the correct decision isn't always the fast one. And so I certainly think that this council is probably not best equipped to solve this issue. That it is, there are agencies out there that do this kind of work on a daily basis. And that's probably where this needs to be. However, we're here and we're tackling, you know, sometimes the policy decisions is like making sausage. It's messy, but you end up getting a good result at the end. So I'm hopeful that that's what we're faced here with today. It might look a little messy, but we're going to get to a point to where the outcome sets Bossier City on a new trajectory. Policies and procedures are in place to ensure that these questions just never come up again. But I think it's vitally important that we think this through, that we read through what Mr. Hammonds has worked hard on and put together. And we make the right decision, not the quick decision. I think that is in the best interest of the city. And as someone elected by all sixty-eight thousand people in this city, that is what they want. They want the right decision. All right.
You've already taken, you've already taken public comment.
What's that?
I said, you've already taken their public comment.
We have, but we didn't exceed the forty-five minute set. So I'll let Mr. Lowery, if he wants to say something, to say something.
Duke Lowery, ten seventeen Benton Road. I think the last election showed a desire from the public to have more transparency in Bossier City. I think that's why folks sought to turn the page in Bossier. And, you know, as someone who has been around Bossier, I was born here, been here my whole life. I retired from Bossier City. And someone who has experienced, you know, some of the lack of transparency in Bossier City and suffered as a result of it, you know, when I hear the term liar, in fact, I was accused as being a liar by the city of Bossier, only to ultimately find out that it was the city of Bossier that was conducting training that wasn't in compliance with state or national standards in providing a substandard service to the citizens of Bossier. And unfortunately, that wasn't the first time this exact thing. In fact, there was a case with Mike Dooley where the city of Bossier again. So when I hear when someone puts an objection up here to what's being discussed and they're accused of being a liar, I would say the best way to address that is with crystal-clear transparency. But it's a pattern in Bossier to not allow the public to have access to all the information, to draw their own conclusions on things. You know, case in point, I've sent public information requests for things regarding the Link Coleman lawsuit, to which I'm pretty confident, if I recall correctly, I'm shooting off the cuff here, but I was told I couldn't have access to that. It was sealed. I also understand that councilmen have been told that they have gag orders on them, only to find out that that's, nobody knows about that. That's what the public was told, but that wasn't the case. And it resulted from going into an executive session. So my point is, is I would ask that this council, you know, not go to executive session. And if you do go to executive session, how would you go to executive session and have a discussion with people who are said to be involved in this issue you're debating, you know, giving you counsel? I think that's a bad decision. I don't have a lot of faith on that, you know, you're going to get a lot of progress if you go to Benton or even in Baton Rouge. I hope that's not the case. But I don't think you guys going into executive session is a positive thing. I think that's where transparency goes to die, and I would urge you to not do that.
Thank you, Mr. Lowery. And on this transparency front, Mr. Hammonds addressed this in the committee meeting. But there are parts of this report and the sworn statements that were turned into him that do contain sensitive information. So we will have to get with legal counsel to make sure any proper redactions are done. But we will make the report public when that time is appropriate. All right, is there any other further comment from the council? If there's not, we'll be doing this.
I just wanted to thank Councilman Hammond for his hard work of getting all this information put together. And we appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Mr. Hammonds worked very hard on it. All right, is there any other comment? All right, again, we're going to be voting by voice. So all those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
All right, let the record show that we have five, four, one against. That motion carries. Is there any announcements? If there's none, council meeting adjourned.